We're going to call the meeting to order. A council meeting for June 8th, 6:38 PM. We'll start with, we'll open the session with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. We will move to item number three, which is public comment. Chip, you are, we'll look to you to manage those as I call.
Dom, do you want to make me a co-host so I can change the names of the participants?
Sure. How do I do that?
I think you click on the three dots in the upper right of my video and it'll give you one of the options.
Before we get there, Chip, is there anyone that you need to clarify as to who it may be? Do we have any?
Oh, yeah. You want me to go through the list?
Yes, please.
Let's see. 798-2848, could you tell us your name, please?
My name is Dylan Woods.
Thank you, Dylan.
All right. And 393-7408?
Yeah, hey, it's Zach Scheffler.
Hey, Zach, okay.
Zach, thanks for joining us.
Hey, good to see you guys.
I think everyone's, everyone's name, everyone else's name is on.
Okay.
So, do you want to just start at the top?
Yep, so, well, we'll start, why don't we have people raise their hands if they have comments and then I'll call on them and you can bring them into the meeting, Chip.
Okay.
So, we'll open with public comments. We ask that everyone keep your comments to two minutes per person. If you want to speak, just raise your hand and we will be sure to accommodate you. So, why don't we, let me get my full screen up.
Mr. Mayor, for those that do not have video on, how do they raise their hand?
Yeah, folks on the phone can't raise their hands, so we'll probably just have to go through the list.
If they hit, if they hit star nine, it should raise their hand on the participant screen.
Okay.
Why don't we, how many do we have on the phone? Two?
Two.
Why don't we start with those first, so we don't have to, start with Zach. Zach, thanks for joining us. Do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Yeah, yeah, just for Zoom meetings, that's cool. I just wanted to call and show voices support. I was made aware about the police issue. Municipal Resources, Inc. is doing some work with you guys as far as consulting about that. I just wanted to call about that and just say that I'm looking forward to what they have to say. And I'm really going to keep things brief because I understand that's ongoing, but, you know, just the concerns about the local police is what I have. The national news, I mean, it's awful what's been done out there, but locally, we got problems too. And even before the national stuff, you know, reading local news, seeing the photos, hearing the stories, it's definitely a problem and I'm glad it's being addressed and I'm glad you guys have opted to work with MRI. I was reading outside, well, I was reading some federal officials writing that local folks, local government can make the biggest changes with the police. So, I just want to thank you and encourage you all to do some thorough work. You guys have like, obviously, the most power when it comes to this kind of stuff. The coronavirus, I'm sure budgets are, budget cuts are coming and, you know, how the police department figures in with that. I'm eager to see those results. That's all I really have to say, mostly just because the MRI stuff is forthcoming.
Thank you, Zach. We too are looking forward to the MRI report, so. The other person on the phone was?
Dylan Woods.
Dylan?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, I was born here in Franklin County. My parents are buried here in St. Albans. I live and work here in St. Albans now and mostly, most recently, I've worked as an independent journalist and I've worked for a St. Albans company that supports local dairy farmers. And I too wanted to make a comment about the police thing. I ended up taking notes. It ended up into a two-page letter. I'm going to send you the letter via email, but just real briefly, since I only have two minutes, I'm just going to say that I've been stalked, harassed, threatened, and attacked by secret society people in this town. And I have sent a couple of letters, emails to the police chief, got absolutely no response. That either means he, you know, is part of the club and not interested in dealing with this issue, or he didn't get my emails. I don't really know, but I decided to come to you folks to sort of complain about this. So, I just hope that, you know, one of the things that's not talked about in the media is that at police stations all over the country, secret society people have sort of taken charge of these organizations and these departments. And because of that, they can turn a blind eye when they gang up on people, whether it's because of their color or because they're gay or whatever the issue is. And I hope that in choosing the next police chief, you, in your vetting, you will please, I mean, can't you, can't you find out if they're part of these kind of organizations that are, that have a history of being discriminatory or biased against people because of their color? I mean, the Freemasons, for example, they don't allow black people, generally speaking, they haven't allowed black people historically in their organizations. They don't allow gay people, they don't allow women. I mean, there are groups of people that are, that have a history of being specifically against certain kinds of people. And I hope that in vetting the next police chief, you will delve into things like that to see if these people have a bias in their history or in their, you know, is their family part of this secret society thing? I think it's a very important issue. I have literally ended up in the ER room here in the St. Albans Hospital because I was attacked by secret society people at my work. And I just think that the problem is more serious than people realize. And I just hope that as a council, you will read the next email. I've sent you guys an email before, but I'm going to send you another email today with more details. And I hope that you'll read it, I hope that you'll think about it, and I hope that you'll take action to, you know, to choose a police chief that is more, that is less biased. I just, I mean, I don't really know this police chief, but the fact that he didn't respond to my emails makes me believe that there's a possibility that maybe he, he is more biased than, than he should be.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
That's it, done. Thank you.
You've got the email you need to forward that to us?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Chip, I'm going to take your suggestion. I'll go down the list, it'll probably work easier that way.
Okay. Do you see it or do you want me to call out the names?
I've got Kate LaRose next.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Kate.
Great to, great to see folks and to hear voices. So, I would, I just have one quick question. I would just love to hear from each counselor and the mayor on this question. And that is, what is your ideal when it comes to police reform and citizen oversight and engagement?
I'll start that, Kate. I would be the first to say I'm not an expert by any means. I am, we have hired a consultant, MRI, as Zach alluded to. I am, I'm looking for their recommendations to start with and we will continue to do our homework and speak to other communities. The city manager's doing that now. And we will, we have the opportunity to bring a new police chief onboard with the hiring process, will include some community members in that as well. And I'm not an expert by any means, so I look to the others that know more about this than I do and look for some guidance in that respect. If other counselors want to chime in, feel free. If not...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Kate, that's a really great question and I think there are a lot of aspects to policing that we're all confronting and the council has been over the last few months and taking some of the issues we've had pretty seriously. But, but when you talk about ideal, I think what I would like to see is that people in our community feel that regardless of their age or their race or what side of the tracks they live on or what neighborhood they live in, that they feel like the police are there to protect and serve them and that, that, and that we have a reputation of having a really fair police and that we're leaders in some of our policies in terms of use of force. And we're going to listen to what folks in the community have to say as we go through this process with MRI and getting a new police chief to make sure we're heading in that direction.
Mr. Mayor, it's Jim Polkie from Ward Two. Kate, hi. I think, I have to, I agree with Mike. I think our consultant, MRI, is going to tell you, is going to give us a lot of good stuff here. I've been a big fan of community policing for a long time and I think that's a big thing for me that we need to make sure that that continues or even improves. I agree with Mike that I think we need police officers that treat, treat everyone, no matter race, sex, economic status equally, and enforce the laws equally by the same token, but not, but not show any bias or prejudice against anyone. And the use of force thing, obviously, right now nationally, it's a big deal. So, that's, so I, so I'm looking for some guidance on how that's going to go in terms of training for our police officers and our police people, obviously, have a big factor in that too. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, Kate. This is Marie Basset from Ward Three. And I just sort of echo the others as far as, I think, the ideal situation would be that all citizens feel safe regardless of, of gender, color, whatever. And that they would be, that our officers would be trained well enough to avoid confrontation and conflict or dissolve confrontation and conflict whenever possible. I think policing all through the country, obviously, has changed, is changing, and hopefully by us looking at our own situations, we can make some improvements there and, and we are taking steps to, to get these things resolved. And I think that that's, you know, we're, we're hopefully going to head in the right direction here. So, that's, that's my feeling on it.
Kate, I don't want to cut too much more into your two minutes, but this is Chad. You're not going to hear anything different from me. I just want to stress that the police department's there to keep our community safe and it's how we do that exactly, that's the important piece. I, I agree that our, I think our public, our citizens could be more involved in our police department and I just don't know yet the level at which that is, that's going to happen. You know, we're hoping MRI hits a home run on this and gives us lots of good information and recommendations and from there, we can see where we go and the direction our police department heads in.
Kate, it's Tim from Ward One. That question is evolving and it all depends where we are in time as to the type of police department we think's ideal. So, I think that's why we have the evaluation study that's going to come up. I think it's going to show us a lot and tell us a lot. And the thing we're going to have to look for is how quickly can our police department adapt to the current conditions? Six months ago, we wanted a certain type of police department. Today, we want another type of police department. So, as long as we're not doing off the cuff and we're doing something that is supported by data and we have experienced officers and a good evaluation report, timely, and people are evaluated often, I think that's the, those are going to lead to ideal conditions. But to say today, what do we want for an ideal police department? I don't think we know that. Yet.
Hi, Kate. This is Kate Lassens from Ward Five. Just really quickly, I would say the words that spring to my mind are fairness, justice, and an unbiased approach.
Kate, can you?
But a big piece of it for me is also connection to the community. I think that's something that we need to learn from. Oh, sorry, could you hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up. In the future, you might want to click off the video.
I think my sound might be using too much and hearing that. Can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now, Tim?
Yep, you're good.
How about now?
Yep, you're good.
The last piece of that was that I just wanted to say that, you know, I think having deep community connections is, is a piece of what I would like to see. Thanks.
Thanks, Kate. So, Kate, you're good?
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone. That was super helpful to hear.
Thank you. We're going to move on to BB.
I'm here basically to learn and to understand and get more information. What does MRI stand for?
Municipal Resources Incorporated.
Municipal Resources?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can go, they're on MRI.
That's it.
MRIInc.gov, I think is their website.
Yeah, it's weird. It's actually MRIGov.com, which is a little strange.
BB, thanks for joining us.
Yep. Glad to be here.
Next on the list is Derek Brower. Derek, did you want to say, make any comments? You're muted, Derek.
No, I'm just listening in. I'm with seven days.
Okay, you're good?
Yep.
Thank you. He was on an iPhone, I'm not sure who that is.
I think it's Gina Pell.
Oh, she's on video.
Have you muted yourself? We can't hear you.
Jan, I'm going to come back to you if you can hear me. We're going to go to, Jan, I'll come back to you. Angie Sturm. And you're on mute as well, Angie.
Hi, I'm glad to be here. Glad to see so many interested community members at the city council member, meeting. I care deeply about our police department and our community and hope that in the training, in the considerations of the budget, in the considerations of how the force is focused, that intersectionality of the profiles of all of our community new members is considered. And by that, I mean, I hope that we can look at things like race and gender and address and socioeconomic status and being from here or not being from here and learn to talk about them all and how they all work together. I'm really concerned about our recovery community and all of our community being able to work together to become more healthy. I hope that we can really examine ways to divest and defund parts of our police force that are not contributing to the health of our community as much as other service-oriented, you know, providers that are already focusing on our community could be of service were they better funded. Thanks for hearing what I had to say.
Thank you, Angie. Thanks for joining us. Casey Robert.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi. I also echo a lot of what Angie was saying and at a time where it seems like maybe we can divest from the police or defund some of the police. And looking at the budget for next year, it appears that the police capital is going to see a 566% increase. And I was wondering if a little more information could be provided about that increase, why that increase is happening and where that money is going to?
Sure. I'll, a large part of that is the new police station that's being established on Main Street, but I'll turn it over to the city manager to touch on that a little bit more.
Casey, I'm not looking at the budget, but the voters approved the Congress and Maine redevelopment project, a portion of which involves the repurposing of the existing CCV building on South Main into a police station. And FY21 is the first year that we occupy that building. And so, there's perhaps what you're looking at is money in and then money out in one year and then the debt service, which would be a smaller number, which would be the annual payment. You know, the annual rent and everything on that building is about $300,000. But there's some, some fit-up costs that are north of that. So, maybe you're looking at the borrowing for the fit-up.
Dom, could I entertain Casey Touchbase with you?
Sure.
For more in-depth conversation?
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Casey. We'll go to Mary Ann Hunkin.
So, the corruption of the St. Albans Police Department is not new and it's been going on for decades and it's time for the city council to take the side of people and stop defending the police as an institution. The St. Albans Police Department is beyond reform and it is not enough to bring on a new police chief. I call you to consider how to better invest our community and am demanding divestment from the police and investment in the St. Albans community. Calling on you as our local government to divest resources away from policing and into local budgets to reallocate those sources to things like healthcare and food security and education for all the people in our community. More officers and guns are not the solution to longstanding problems of racial disparities and injustice and police violence in this community. I also have questions about the budget. What is under purview and what is no longer under purview? I would like more information about that 500, and I think it's 588% increase in the police capital in the city budget. I would like to know if there are vacancies in the police department and request that the city not fill those positions and reallocate funds to social services. I would like to know what the city council is asking for in the MRI report, when that report will be available and what you plan to do with that information. I would like to know why you are listening to us when I know that you have heard from communities that are having high instances of police interactions and that the people that you're hearing from tonight are not those people. I want to know if the St. Albans Police Department is involved in any militarization programs. I want to know what equipment the St. Albans Police Department currently has and I want the budget to be broken down for those specific equipment items. And that I request, I've requested from our police department data. The data that I have received back under the fair and impartial policing policy has been incomplete and that information should be easily accessible to all people. I should not have to ask for that information. It should be readily available on a website. And so, what I want to know is how the city council is going to push the St. Albans Police Department to give us that data and to make that data readily accessible to all people at all times. Thank you.
Matthew, have you spoken yet?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
You're all set? Thank you. Rere Erickson?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. So, just to go along with what seems to be a kind of pattern of questions, I do have questions about community oversight committee and obviously, that is largely tied up in the report you're waiting for. But other than that, I think, you know, given the current climate and recent issues within the community here in St. Albans, I just wonder why there hasn't been more vocal output from the city and more especially, and importantly, from the police department regarding the current climate nationally and what the police department thinks, feels, does. I mean, I know they have a Facebook page. I know they rarely post on it lately, but it would be great to, for them to at least have a statement. Maple Run Unified had a statement, so I don't see any reason why the local police department can't. And just to repeat what a lot of people have said, I would really like for the city to look into defunding the police department and allocating those funds to things that make the, the community more healthy and better. And I think that's an easy thing to do and I hope when the MRI report comes in, that that's something that the city really, really seriously looks into and makes priority. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Sarah Hour.
Hello.
Hello, Sarah.
Good evening. I would just like to emphasize my support of some of the other community members that have spoken in regards to defunding the police and reallocating those resources to other parts of our community. And I want to specifically speak to, and I have some questions about resource officers that are in the St. Albans City School, perhaps BFA and maybe other schools in the Maple Run School District. And I'm not sure if anyone here can speak to this, but I'm curious how contracts between schools and police are negotiated.
Dom, do you want to answer that?
The school district reaches out to multiple providers and, and this area, there's two, the Franklin County Sheriff and the St. Albans Police Department. And they haven't gone through an RFP process. They've typically done it a little bit more, haven't gone through a formal RFP process. They've done it a little bit more informally, more like purchasing professional services, asking for proposals from both the sheriff and the St. Albans Police Department. I have to say that hiring the police department in the jurisdiction is a compelling advantage that I'm sure weighs into their decision-making. Costs us about, around numbers, $100,000 a year to provide that service. The school pays for the nine months that, school pays 100 grand and then the city picks up the additional two and a half months or so that they're not in the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Sarah, you all set?
For now, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jan, I don't want to forget about you. Did we get your volume, your microphone fixed?
It switched back to my computer.
We can hear you.
Yes. But when you switched over something, my, my whole computer froze, so it was hard to get back. And, and this may have been raised by somebody who has spoken earlier that I missed, but I was wanting to know, I'm requesting that the city itself make a statement regarding the events that have happened over the last couple of weeks with the tragic death of George Floyd and, and others before him, that the city is making a statement. Floyd and others before him, that the city is making a statement regarding their commitment to anti-racism and social justice in our community. I think this is key with our whole moving forward with revitalization and the changes in our community to put this out from our city council, as well as somebody had mentioned from the police department as well.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Anything else? Thank you. I think Tanner McKeown.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us here.
Thanks, Tanner.
I also just wanted to voice my own concern about what's happening nationally in our own participation in that with our police force, what we see echoed in our community. And I realize, you know, we have this evaluation ongoing or coming, but I was curious what that evaluation actually encompass. Is it looking into police violence, how we interact with our community budgets, everything?
Dom, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'm happy to share the MRI scope. It's been written up in the messenger, I believe, previously. I guess it's important to remember the challenges we were having when we hired MRI. And when we were, we hired MRI to help us with looking at our selection process for our personnel primarily. And so they're, they're looking at the recruitment of our officers, the training, onboarding of our officers, and the retention of our officers. And interspersed throughout that, they're trying to help us answer the question of why do we keep having some of the problems with officer behavior that we're having? They're not, there isn't evidence of racial disparity in St. Albans. There, there isn't. We haven't asked them for a top to bottom review of our department. They're, they're looking at the challenges that we were facing when, several months ago, when they were brought on. Now, the world has changed in law enforcement overnight. The industry in the field is going through rapid transformation and disruption, and I think the city is pretty committed to being on the front of that wave and riding that wave and being plugged into that wave and not being the bottom of it, in the undertow.
Thank you. How do we know there's no racial disparity or discrimination happening? Is this something that's been evaluated, or are we just assuming this?
I think my statement was that we haven't, that wasn't the problem that we were focusing on. And
Okay.
I'm certainly not going to stand on the bow and say, you know, that, that, I don't want to set myself up for that. But, but all I'm saying is that there haven't been incidents of that. That's, that the issues of St. Albans is dealing with is excessive force with three or four officers on one shift. And we're pretty committed to dealing with that. And that plugs into the national, national conversation, obviously.
Yeah, thank you. For one last question, because, you know, this was started before these issues have became aware of nationally, is there any ability to alter the scope of this evaluation, or are we sort of locked into the scope as it stands?
We can alter the scope of it, but I'm not sure MRI is, you know, the best, the best fit for that. MRI is a team of their municipal consultants specializing in New England, and they're bringing forward folks that are pretty plugged into some of the reform efforts. They were on the Obama's 21st Century Policing Council, and that, that's their worldview, reflects the 21st Century policing effort. But I don't, I think who's the expert on some of the things that are emerging is to have communities respond to the George Floyd incident. We don't know yet who those experts are. And I think in Vermont, most of that training comes from the Vermont Police Academy. So we're very plugged into the police academy. We're taking a look, as we speak, at our use of force policy. We amended it at least twice, if not three times over the last six months, based on the issues we were dealing with at the time. We've opened it up again in light of recent incidents. And we're comparing ours to the best models we can find in Vermont, as we're coming out from the legal cities and towns and the police academy. We got a copy of Burlington's over the weekend. But I, I, my inclination, and I'm open to being persuaded otherwise, but my inclination is the MRI effort really needs to focus on what we ask them to do. And that scope can expand if we need them to, but I think we're able to take some of the, some of the reforms and the industry standards that are changing overnight and populate that into all of our efforts. I don't think we necessarily want to have MRI pivot on their work at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, guys.
Thanks, Tanner. I don't think I've missed anyone. Is there Chip? Maybe you can back me up on this. Is there anyone that may have been skipped inadvertently?
I'm not seeing anybody else who hasn't spoken already or been given an opportunity to speak.
If there's anyone out there that we missed, please speak up. Hearing none, and we will move on to item number four. We will entertain a motion to recess from the city council meeting and go into the liquor control board.
Motion to move out of city council into liquor control board.
Second.
Second by Chad, motion by Tim, second by Chad. All those in favor, give a thumbs up. Unanimous, so we'll move into liquor control. Curry, we'll turn the conversation over to you and request for a second, second level license, second class license.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, council. We do, we just have a brief liquor control tonight, just a second class license for the Family Dollar. It's right next to Food City. It's just a newer, new establishment, new ownership. And I've included all their certificate of insurance floor plan and application.
Curry, I noticed on the, on the application that the, you've got NA for liquor tax paid, and that's because it's a new application for them?
Yes. And also, since it's second class license, we don't charge the liquor tax for them.
All right. And what about the fire inspection?
Um, I didn't, so a lot of our second classes didn't have the fire inspection, but I can double check to see. I didn't, I didn't know if we had it from the previous one, but I'll check it with Matt.
Yeah, if we haven't, I think they had it before, so that should, I think that should be yes instead of NA.
Okay, yep.
Just check me if I, I may be wrong on that.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely follow up. They're, they've been in great communication with me lately, so if they, if I need it, I'm sure they can get it to me quickly.
Tim, if it's a, if it's a, was it, Curry, was it a sale? Is it new owners?
Yes.
Tim, do they need to do, do they need to do a fire inspection before the sale of that?
Geez, but usually it's, it's a, it's a prerequisite for sale for most attorneys. Some attorneys don't require it, but everything that is something other than a single family dwelling, I require a fire safety inspection either from the city of St. Albans, or if they're outside the city of St. Albans jurisdiction, from the Vermont Division. And we usually get them without any problem, but I, there's, there's no real requirement to have it done other than the statute, there's a statute that requires that upon the transfer of property, first buying the property abide by all the existing code and regulations. So it'd be who's the person buying it, because if they get a safety inspection and there's $10,000 worth of stuff that has to be done, they're stuck having to pay for it rather than the seller. And at that point in time, the buyer's now looking to see who represented them to find out why it wasn't done before they bought it. Tim, would this apply if they just sold the business? I don't think they transferred the property. Oh, absolutely. You're absolutely right, Marty. That, that obligation would then lie to Palmero, right?
Right. Well, yeah, Hunt, I think owns that property.
Yeah, Hunt, yeah, yeah. That, that obligation, that's right, Chad, that obligation for that inspection would fall to the lessor, which is Hunt Investments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Curry, just out of curiosity, dollar, the Dollar Tree doesn't sell alcohol, right? I didn't see it on your list.
I don't believe they do.
I didn't see it.
What does that mean? You get a beer for a dollar an hour? I mean, how are they selling that stuff?
It's not very good beer, Tim.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, white label beer or something, I guess.
Okay.
I'll make it to approve the application that's submitted.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Any other conversation questions?
I did just want to note from our last meeting to follow up in that general vicinity, that Food City did get their license all squared away. I worked with multiple people on that. So thanks, Chad, for reaching out. And we got everything all sorted.
Thanks for going the extra mile, Curry.
Thank you, Curry. So going back to this application for second class license. Are there any other questions for Curry?
Motion made. It was a motion and a second, wasn't it?
Motion second, just making sure, no questions. None. So all those in favor approving a second class license for Family Dollar, please give a thumbs up. Seeing unanimous, the motion passes. We will now adjourn. Was there anything else, Curry?
Motion to approve the minutes, motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second that.
Tim, seconded by Chad to approve the minutes from May 11th, 2020. Any changes, amendments, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, thumbs up. Unanimous, thank you. And the motion to approve the minutes has been passed. Curry?
One thing under other business? Yep. Curry, I, we might have touched on it at the last meeting, but has anything changed with the rules, I guess they call it liquor and lottery now, regarding the outdoor consumption during this timeframe? Because I noticed there's a lot more people that are going outdoors now. Is there something extra that we're supposed to be doing, or are we still covered under the regular liquor requirements, or are they all required to have outside consumption permits? Can you hear that, Curry?
We lose Curry? Chip, you don't have Curry on anymore?
Actually, I don't see her any longer.
Tom, Tom, can you, can you find that out, just to see if we're supposed to be doing anything extra, or if we're, is there some leniency in the policy?
Yep, I can find that out and get back to you later this week.
Tim, I can answer, I think I can answer that. The, in the eyes of the Liquor and Lottery Board, they've left it up to the local municipalities and have allowed that permit, the indoor consumption permit, to flow outside.
Okay, so we don't have to require or request them to come specially before us to get an outside consumption permit? Is that for good, Marty, or is that?
No, no, that's just through the governor's executive order.
Okay.
I guess, I guess Curry had someplace to be.
I hear.
Any other, other business for, for discussion? Hearing, what was that? Hearing none will adjourn out of the liquor control board.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad. All those in favor say aye, thumbs up. Motion passes. We'll move on to item number five, Consider Adoption of Local Emergency Management Plan with Chip Sawyer.
Every year, we are supposed to double check our local emergency management plan and file it with the Regional Planning Commission. And then they take it from there in terms of where else it needs to go. We keep it on file, and largely, it's a good contact list for if something goes wrong. It has a list of the most likely local officials that would be required in an emergency, and then also various different useful contacts depending on what the emergency is.
Chip, are we able to amend this during the course of the year?
Yes, you can actually have me do some edits right now if you'd like.
I just, I mean, Gary Taylor's on there, but I'm wondering if he won't probably be there for a year, is what I'm wondering.
Oh, yes, that's something we can definitely, and I think, I think we're, we're good on our side of the, of the thing, Jim. You know, we'll, we'll know who to call typically if there's an emergency on staff. But that's the sort of thing we can definitely take care of if there are changes.
All right.
Chip, I got some changes I need for you to do to my contact. That's an old phone number, and I want some swapping around with the numbers. I do have a question, though, for you. Do, do the, do the city councilors have to maintain a certain ICS training status in order to get federal grants?
We brought this up last time, and if I remember, the conversation ended when you were Kate said that you had that training. But we can look into that.
Okay, if it's two, I know Kate and I have it. I just want to make sure, because I thought Liz had it as well, and that was three. I just want to make sure that, you know, the mayor's not slacking.
That's the Incident Command System?
Yes, sir.
We can look into that for sure.
Just out of curiosity, on your form, you have the ELC director with no name, but is that, is that the statewide director, or is that a local director?
It's a local director.
So we don't have anyone in that?
It would be local. And, yeah, we can add a, oh, it's typically the same person who activates the ELC, which is in the row above that. So that would be Gary Taylor, or the city manager, or the acting emergency management director, or the mayor. But we would typically go to the highest ranking public safety official who's in the city at the time.
You know, I, I'm, at some point, we ought to probably look into the various, like, daycares and things like that, and update that information, because I know for a fact that some of these are no longer in existence. And I mean, I'm just using those as an example. We probably should update this information at some point.
Chip, do we get that information from DCF and the, the elderly housing? Do we get that from Dale?
Yeah, we would get that from whichever is the licensing authority with the state.
They're, so they're behind. Okay, that doesn't surprise me.
They may be licensed, Jim. They just, their, their license hasn't run out yet.
Okay, I get you.
And, yeah, and in this case, it's best to, best to call a number and have it be disconnected than to not realizing you need to call someone. But back to, you know, back to what I said, and also Chad sending, sending me your updated contact info. But like you mentioned, Jim, this is kind of a living document.
Right.
There are changes. Definitely, I would suggest the city council adopt what we have. But if there are any, any edits or corrections, to keep sending them our way along during the course of the year, and certainly anything you have right now.
Sure.
Am I correct in saying that this has to be updated yearly?
It has to be updated yearly, but then it could also be updated, you know, at any time, based on changes.
I would, I would move to adopt the Local Emergency Management Plan.
Thank you, James. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Any other questions or comments for Chip? Hearing none. All those in favor, thumbs up. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number six, Consider Naming a Private Road Randomer Place. Chip, that one's yours as well.
So it's, you know, St. Albans is a historical urban center. So it's, you know, St. Albans is a historical urban center. We've had our streets and buildings and street addresses for a long time. And sometimes they don't quite jive with the new standards that have been adopted by enhanced 911 with the state. One of the things that E911 likes is when you have multiple buildings on a driveway, especially if they're all principal uses, like they're all a house or like a house in an office, where the fire department or an ambulance might have to respond. They prefer that that driveway actually have a private street name. And then you can give a street address for that street to each of those specific buildings. And there are multiple places in the city where eventually we'll have to get around to this. Four Winds comes to mind on North Elm Street. But the Cadillac Motel has always had multiple buildings on the property, but only one street address. It's the South Main address. I forget which one it is at the moment. The Greenmount Cafe and a couple hotel buildings are all on that one property, but they're all separate buildings. And the Cadillac Motel has been approved to develop more buildings on the property as they expand their residential use. So E911 contacted Dave Southwick, our 911 coordinator, and said with everything going on, they'd like us to do a readdressing of that parcel and determine a private drive name for the driveway that goes up into the Cadillac property. They've contacted the owners of the property and they decided they're fine with that. And they would like the name Randomer Place, which is actually the French word raname, which means rebirth or rebirth or renaissance, which they like. So E911 said that street name works for them. And basically, it's a pretty simple procedure. When we name a private drive, it's not a city street at all. If it's just naming a private drive, we just asked the city council to approve that. We did the same thing with Myland Drive a couple of years back, which is also a private drive. And so it's just a motion being brought to the council to rename that drive Randomer Place as a private drive.
I'm moved.
Merci, Chip, on that. Do we put the sign up on that?
Yeah, I got Marty to agree that we would put up the first sign and then they're on the hook for it after that. Hopefully, no one runs into it. Might take a while, though. Signs are kind of backed up right now.
Yeah, I think we had one motion by Chad to, and a second by Jim.
Yes.
Any other questions for Chip? Hearing none. All those in favor, thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes to rename the street Randomer Place. I won't attempt by Canadian accent. Thank you, Chip. I think you're still on at the table. So we're going to consider a resolution to apply the Vermont Sales Tax Reallocation Program for the Main Congress Maiden Lane Project. Can you give some background on that, Chip, please?
Yep. For a project in a designated downtown where it's a public-private partnership or when you are engaging in a public infrastructure project that you can closely link to a private project nearby, you're allowed to apply to the state to have some of the sales tax paid by that private project's construction actually get allocated toward your public project. We did this on Lake Street when we were doing the Lake Street Streetscape and the Hampton Inn Hotel was also being built around the same time. We came to the state for the Congress and Main Project two years ago and they approved us, but they only gave us a partial award. And we, just in the interest of, you know, the finances of the project and trying to lower our public dollars as much as possible, we would like to go back to the state for, two years later, for what would be the up to the maximum amount that we could possibly have been awarded. And we can do this because the project's not substantially complete yet. And there was a lot of extra capacity in terms of the sales tax that will be paid by the private projects that could still be allocated to the public work we're doing. And the public work that's eligible is the ground field work and the construction of the parking lot that the city will continue to own. Part of the grant application is that the city council passes a resolution, you know, to put the application forward. And I was just hoping if the council does decide to pass it, that I could just mark on the resolution that each of you approved it via remote connection. Any questions?
Anyone have questions for Chip? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Was that Kate? Kate, the original motion, seconded by Jim. Any other further questions for Chip? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution to apply to the Vermont Sales Tax Reallocation Program for the Main Congress and Main Lane Projects, thumbs up. Everyone's, it's unanimous, so the motion passes. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
We'll now bring on Tom to talk about the water, wastewater and stormwater budgets.
Sure, how about I start with water? So first off, for water, wastewater and stormwater, there's no increase in any of the user fees whatsoever. And given the situation with COVID-19, budgets are fairly bearable compared to some of the prior years. On the water side, total increase in expenses and revenues about $85,000. About half of that in water is covered from some reserves that we have. Let me read the Fairfax filter. We had unspent money and when you borrow the bond funds, unspent money can be used towards offsetting the costs in future years. So that's proposed for this budget and we've done that for a few years. And that's in line 13. Looking at the water expenses, a couple items I just want to highlight. There's always staff reallocations within water and wastewater and the general fund. Every year, we look at what the staff is doing and throw in some tweaks, generally nothing dramatic. But that generally accounts for some of the changes, so there's no above standard raises built in. There's a fair amount of minor reallocations that add up because they might involve a half dozen staff. One thing across all funds we're going to see for some years, and this is in line 25 and it's minor next year, is increases in the state pension cost. There are small increases baked in for the next several years. And given the recent performance of the market, those smaller increases might get a little bigger. So it's just something for us to keep our eye on. We've focused a lot on our own pension plan over the last few years. And I think that's in good condition. It's a state plan that we've got to watch fairly closely. If we head down to line 35 under legal services, that's been reduced from last year. We think that gives us plenty of room given where we're at. And there hasn't been a lot of action on the legal side in water for some time, so we think that's a rather safe reduction. If we head down a little further to line 52, we've budgeted $10,000 in water and also in wastewater. And that would be the city absorbing any online fees that users pay when they go online to our website and pay a bill. It's something that we've talked about a bit over the years. And in talking to Dom, this is just one of those operational expenses that people have become accustomed to. You know, you don't go to memos and pay a credit card for you, just pay your bill. So we're proposing to incorporate that for the city. It also would make, would allow us to give, I think, better customer service. It's one of the chief complaints of folks who call in. And Kristen Field's calls very well, but it's a primary complaint. Going down a little further to line 63, we're still budgeting $100,000 to put in our reserve for budget stabilization. Water and wastewater. When they need their reserves, they don't need small numbers typically, so I think continuing that habit is good for the city. If we go down a little further into the CIP in line 68, we're continuing to save the allocation fees that we get. In line 71, there's a new truck there for Marty and that's split across the fund. So it's a $90,000 purchase that we would pay dead on in future years. Typically, we borrow for five years for these trucks. And they're replaced more or less every year. These are the main workhorses he uses. And when we go down to line 78, a little further down, we're now in year four of the meter replacement program. And this is the radio signal devices and the meter heads. It's about 4,000 users in the system, so about 4,000 meters. And we're very slowly working our way through it and we've been, we really hit our stride and we're moving well before the coronavirus and then we had to hit the pause button completely. So this is going to be an ongoing item for a good number of years, but it's just something that has to happen. The old devices are used by handheld device where someone in public works drives to their neighborhoods and gets the readings. And we have new radio towers in to read these devices, but we need to replace all the meter heads, all the what we call the M radios and the meter. So this is going to go on for a good number of years, I think. Going down a little further to lines 88 and 89, we're continuing to do some of the background work on the Aldis Hill water tank, but we've received a grant for that. So there's no need to budget funds this year. And Kingman Street, we've also got grants for Kingman, so we're not stopping that. That's just in the pipeline and advanced far enough that we've got some funds. When we go down to debt, that is almost the penny the same as the prior year. Nothing new. There will be a tiny change in the future year as we buy a truck. And most of our debt in water is long term, so there's nothing dramatic coming off the schedule anytime soon. When we look at the water plants, under the salaries, we moved part of a staff person into the wastewater side. Several other staff in water and wastewater have dual licenses. And so depending on the needs of the department, we can shift people back and forth from time to time. And so that's been occurring. And this in essence memorializes that for the next year going forward. Going down a little further, I want to point out line 134, which is chemicals, which is always a big ticket item. There's a slight cut compared to last year, but we've looked at the actuals and the high watermark of 120 was two years ago. And before that, it was quite a bit less. And the pricing is bid out by the state for these chemicals and it's been fairly consistent over the years. So we think it's a pretty safe number and this year's budget is going to be under that number. Something we watch because it's so big, but we're confident in that projection. And then electricity is similarly a very big number. We're not proposing a change there. The high watermark several years ago of about 180 grand was when we did a lot of work on the Fairfax filter. And so we drove that number higher because the Fairfax plant was down, that's gravity fed and we had to pump from a quom. So given that was our high watermark and Fairfax was down for quite a long time, we feel pretty confident in the 172. We go down to distribution. This is part of the staff reallocation and this is Marty's crew. Every year, we look real hard at that crew and look at their workload and they're more and more an underground crew. And some of the summer work, especially for the sidewalks, which used to be done in-house, is now contracted out as part of the big program. So we've relocated that crew a bit and small percentage changes in how they're allocated across the funds translates to a big number here. But it's not an increase, just a change in how we budget them. So it costs more here saves the general fund. And in total, water revenue and expenses are up 3.3% each. In essence, half of that is covered by the use of a reserve and most of the rest is covered by some increased uses that we're seeing throughout the system in water. So in a nutshell, there's no dramatic action on the water side, no major capital projects proposed and just some minor staff reallocations. Any questions in the water?
I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
Tom, is this, is this budget, do we have any MS4 requirements that we have to meet? Are we sure we're going to meet those? I don't know if there's any new stormwater guidance, you know, metrics we need to meet.
We can get to that. We'll get to the stormwater in a few minutes.
Okay, sorry. I just want a couple other things. Solar, is there any option or any availability for solar at Fairfax to offset some of the cost for electricity?
We've chased that pretty hard the past year. We've looked at Fairfax. We've actually looked at Hardak. And I think there's still some conversation around Hardak, but my understanding is there's not three-phase power close enough to Fairfax to make it feasible for the developer.
Okay.
Fully in place for the wastewater.
Okay. This actually might be a question for Marty and around the meter replacement. Can folks do their own?
No, it requires us to go in and change out the MXU, which is an electronic component. And we have to train whoever we have do it and they have to reprogram the MXU and the meter.
It's fairly complex to get it all done.
And then just last, it's not really a question, it's kind of more of a statement. We say the city is absorbing the fees that are generated, we're paying online. The city is not absorbing the fees, it's being passed on to the users. So I just want to make sure that everyone's okay with the person that does not utilize the online payment. Essentially, I mean, it's pretty minor, but they're going to be picking up the cost for those who do. So as long as everyone else is okay with that, I'm fine with it. I think it was like three or $4 when I did it and I had no problem paying that myself, just because of how convenient it was.
I still get complaints on that, Chad. The argument is, from the people I've heard from, is it's almost a thing of the past as a fee.
And just, we don't, I just want to make everyone sure, everyone know, we do not collect the fee. The person that does that collects, you know, the person that does that for us collects the fee. So now, if I do it online and then my neighbor does it and she goes in to pay, her bill is going to go up just a little bit because she's absorbing the cost into hers and to her bill for me to pay. I'm just, that's the only statement I want to make.
No, I was under the impression that it is our fee. Is that correct, Curry? Who is the fee? Who's charging the fee?
So that's our vendor municipay. So like Chad mentioned, we do charge that service fee. But if somebody walks in to pay or pays by check and we do get rid of that fee, then that person would end up paying for that fee. Anyway, it goes back to the taxpayers. Whereas the person, if they want to pay online and we do charge a fee, it's that person who's just paying for that. And it doesn't affect other people who don't want to pay with their card.
But Tim, to your question, it's not our fee. It's municipay's fee. The fee will be there. The only question is, do we want to socialize it throughout all the ratepayers or have only those that choose to use it? And our read of it in conversations with some councilors was you were an anomaly amongst other businesses in the year 2020 and we should get with the program.
So I think Chad had a question. Is everyone good? So I think Chad had a question. Everyone, is everyone good with that? Thumbs up if. Everyone, yeah. Tim, I can't see yours, but.
I mean, it's not, it's not up for discussion and vote. I just, it's part. It's part of the budget at this point.
No, I know it's not up for vote. I just want to give you an indication to your question.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote down the budget because I'm not going to vote, vote down the budget because of it. I'm just want to make people aware that. It is handy that that we can do that, but it just, you know. I'm going to highly recommend everyone now go on and pay online. It makes it much easier for Curry, but you're going to pay for the service. So you might as well use it now.
Yeah, it does make things easier for staff to, the online payments a whole lot easier to process than someone paying by a check.
Okay, we're moving on, Tom.
Sure, I'll go through the wastewater now. So starting with the, the revenue side, we're not seeing. You know, again, no rate increase. Unlike the water, we're not really seeing any increase in. Usage and that tends to be a bit more driven by industrial customers. The. There was a three percent increase for NWCF with we budgeted for some years and there's never, never been an issue with that. On the admin side, the salary changes again are related to allocation, staff reallocations. As we get on a bit further to line thirty eight for legal, again, there's a reduction there. All of that big litigation is behind us. And most of the legal fees we do for, we pay for water and wastewater. Unrelated to the, to the big litigation that happened was a. Minor issues related to securing easements for construction projects. And that's most of it. So there's nothing dramatic here. Going down a little further. In line sixty six, that ten thousand five hundred is the weed harvester. I think for the fourth consecutive year now. And looking up just a, just a tiny bit up the page from that at line sixty three, the, the budget stabilization fund remains in there at a hundred thousand dollars. And above that, the credit card fees at ten thousand dollars are the same as the the water fund. And the CIP, nothing dramatic or really, really that changes from prior years. The, the allocation fees are still reserved. The trucks are split across the fund a third and we've got the. The wastewater share of the, the meter replacement program. That's kicked in. Let me go down to debt, a couple of key items. The first is online one ten. The state has temporarily placed a stay on one of our scheduled debt service payments. They've done this. For projects that fell into a certain category. There may be some federal funds behind them there and I'm not sure. So for one year, there's almost ninety grand that we simply will not pay. Which is a big help and and allows us to get this budget to zero. Looking down at the, the wastewater upgrade, those are the final numbers. So all these deals are signed and sealed and locked in for a long number of years. And then total wastewater debt. Even with that ninety thousand dollar savings from the state in one year. A million, million fifty eight thousand, if you go back and look at the actuals. Five years ago, it was less than a quarter million. So it's kind of substantially. Primarily because of the upgrade project. But I also recall about five years ago, we were thinking at the time that the upgrade would be a million dollars itself in debt. So we've, we've come out. Better than we'd hope to be at the time. Going down to wastewater collection, we see the, the salary reallocations. And the salaries as in water for the meter work. If we go down to line one thirty six, which is the R and M other, and this is a. She's always a big number and this is the work that Marty's crew does to maintain the system. Forty five thousand dollars is an increase from last year. The ninety five thousand dollars in this year actual was related to. Some big repairs than at pump stations and we're not. A hundred percent done with the project, but we think we can. Get that number by year end. Around the budget number and that's because the, the funds in the upgrade project can pay for that. We're about ninety eight percent done with that upgrade project and we're really working on the final numbers now. So that actual of ninety five. Shouldn't scare us when budgeting for future years because that was a, a bit of an oddity related to the upgrade. Let me go down a little further to the process plant. Most of these numbers are not dramatically changed and even though we've essentially got a new plant, we just don't have enough experience to. You know, look at things like chemicals or look at things like electricity. And do anything dramatic. You know, we are budgeting a ten thousand dollar cut. In line one sixty four to R and M at the plant. But again, when we have a year or two of experience, maybe some of these numbers will go down a bit. And we certainly hope with the new plant that will happen. And we also certainly hope that the overtime will go down as there's less call-ins to emergencies and things breaking. But again, we feel like we've just got to get there and and get a year under our belt. As we go down to NWCF. Small reduction in staff and that's just, that's just related to. Different staff people moving to NWCF versus their own plant. But the, the one eighty one six budgeted there. In line two hundred, if you compare that to the. To the revenue up top for NWCF, it's a, it's a good plan for us to run and it helps make things cheaper for ratepayers. But overall, nothing dramatic change in, in, in wastewater budget. It's good that we're through the upgrade. We're about ninety nine percent through it. Any questions on that side of things? And then I'll kick it over to Chip for stormwater.
Thanks, Tom. Stormwater budgets this year. Had some offsetting increases and decreases. The. Amount of professional services fees needed. Have gone downward because we're more than halfway through the phosphorus control plan that we need to prepare. And also, we believe we'll be spending less on treatment project design this year, this upcoming fiscal year than we have last year. That's been offset by some increases in the. Services and materials for maintenance of stormwater treatment, specifically green stormwater infrastructure. It's focused this year on the rain gardens in Taylor Park up along Church Street, but also. The stormwater planters along Main Streets. We're finally truing up with what it's really going to cost to keep those rain gardens looking nice. Especially the garden along Church Street, which looks a lot better this year with Kelly Wakefield and Greenfeet gardening. Take, taking after that. And the stormwater planters, we do have a, an estimate. If we can get to it this year with everything going on. We have an estimate provided by Cross Consulting to try a. A, a concept of filling those in with, with treatments that remains, but is covered by. Grass, so they wouldn't be open pits any longer. In the meantime, though, they will be planted by Kelly with sunflowers again this year. So if that pilot project doesn't get off the ground. This fiscal year. Well, during the summer, before we get to the next spring, next, it's coming fiscal year, we'll still have some sunflowers there. Otherwise, in light of trying to stay at zero percent change in, in what's raised by fees. We have. We've been able to maintain that.
Tom, who helped you on these budgets on the council was?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Did you have counselors helping you out on this? I thought.
We had some input from the finance committee. We did it electronically, drafted a draft to them and, and. Asked them to. Please scrutinize them and prepare us for Councilor Spooner.
And we said, no problem.
So thank you for that, Tom, and thank you for coming in with a. Zero increase. I think that will make many people happy.
Tim, I got a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead, Tim.
Not, and not with the, well, let me just say that normally we would get together with the budget committee up with the court with Jim. So two things happened. One was COVID nineteen and the other thing obviously was Jim not being at courthouse anymore. So we opted to get the budgets from Tom and Dom and then. Question them online if we had any questions. This is one that I'd come up with. Just a couple of nights ago, after taking a look at this was, we now. Have our sea legs under us as far as the stormwater budget's concerned. It's now been a couple of years. And or at least two. And I'm wondering if. Two things. One is, do we, do we need to have to start up a stabilization budget like we do in water and wastewater? Or B, do we need to do a capital reserve of more than just what we're doing now? Given what's going to come up in the, in the future and. I'll, I'll let someone answer that. Then I have one more quick question.
Yeah, the short answer is, yes, in a non-COVID nineteen world, we would have. But we, the marching orders. For these were. Get to zero, stay at zero. And let's just kind of tread water for a bit. We're still really, I think, ramping up the stormwater. Program and utility and it's probably got on a percentage basis, the most pressure against it because we've. You know, we've, we've got a whole bunch of stuff we need to do in a limited timeframe to do it and we've got to create. A revenue stream that can service some debt for some capital projects. But now it's not the timeframe of that.
Understood, understood. And, and so, but we'll look to that if, if, if the rest of the council agrees, we will look to that for next year. And, and hopefully when things are the way they should be and. Give the council an eye on getting that done. My second question is, I think I've asked it before. Hopefully, is, is Mike still on? Is Mike still on? Mike's still on, right?
Yeah.
Just so he has, just so he has his ear open. I might ask, I'd asked when we started this, whether there was any chance that there could be. Credits given for other projects in other areas, not necessarily the city. Where we could. Though, those developers could or businesses could. Give money to projects in the city, allocation of credits into the city when they can't do upgrades on their own parcels. Is that, is that, can, can, can that happen? Is, is anyone ever look into that to see if we could do that?
It, it's a live discussion, but. Hasn't risen to the level of priority that the Committee of Jurisdiction has really been willing to take it on. But I think as more communities like ours are. Seeing the stormwater expectation move up. Over time, that, that it's going to be necessity makes things a greater priority. You know, the, the committee that would have dealt with it was really focused on Act two fifty reform and that was a bit of a struggle. This biennium. You know, I'd be happy to kind of, if we feel and if I hear from all of you that it's a big priority. I'd be happy to kind of make that a mission and go after it the way I've gone after a couple of other things.
Well, because the city could earmark projects, you know, separation projects where we're not budgeting that, but I'm sure. There are, there are projects that are stalled or can't move forward because of the inability or the expense of stormwater mitigation. And if those credits could be allocated to projects that the city already has in line or that would, that they would have in line. That would be a real easy out for, for a lot of other. Landowners and developers. And I'm talking mainly about a number of subdivisions that are in various areas. That didn't abide by their stormwater permits or stormwater management practices and an hour and a bind. And making a contribution. To another project that would benefit the Lake Champlain through the stormwater. Would also benefit those developments, give them a way to. Contribute something. At, at, at any value to a, a project that maybe the city might have in line and, and the separation. The water separation, stormwater separation, the city would, comes to my mind as being one that we would, we would want to do.
Yeah, there, there's a ton of legal precedent. I'm sure you know this for offsite mitigation in a bunch of areas, whether it's transportation impact fees. Or, you know. Wetlands mitigation, yeah, ag soils is a perfect example. So I, I think. That's something that we could definitely prioritize for next year, assuming I'm back in the legislature.
To Mike's point in terms of precedence. What we have found with both wetlands and ag mitigation is it's going into a statewide fund. They've sort of moved away from. Allowing the permitter, permitee, I should say, to designate where they want the funds go. So usually. Like wetlands will go into Ducks Unlimited. Ag mitigation will go into the land trust. So they, they generate the funds and then designate where they might want them to go. So. I think you're going to find it may be a. It may be a tough, a tough go to have the conversation, but it's worth a try.
Or some hybrid of that is, you know, would, would be fine.
A good example of that is the pilot project we're doing down on Lower Weldon though. Which creates that capacity within our system that other folks that are caught in the net can discharge. Their responsibility by discharging into our system. It gets really technical really quick because you got to align. Non-point source and non-point source with particular types of pollutant and impairments and. You know, oftentimes we're impaired for phosphorus. And somebody else is impaired for another pollutant. And Chip can, you know, wax indefinitely about it, but it's really hard to find that overlapping sphere where it's a good fit.
I, I could get my whiteboard out, but let me just say that. The, the city, Dom and I don't waste any chance. We have to tell the state that someday we're going to have to get more flexible in how we. Fulfill our obligations as a city. Make sure that we are able to spend our money. In the most efficient way possible to, for water quality in our overall basin rather than trying to. You know, we may find ourselves in a position where we're, we're, you know, at the bottom of the barrel in terms of the projects we can do in the city and it's just getting more and more difficult. There's got to be someplace else where we can redirect our efforts. We should definitely talk about that at some point.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Tom or Chip?
Motion to accept water wastewater stormwater budget.
Motion by Tim, seconded by James. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, although the favor say I with a thumbs up. Appears to be unanimous. The motion passes. Moving on to update on sidewalks, Marty?
Yes, we still have sidewalks.
That's good.
We are in the process of finishing pouring what is been torn up on Brainerd Street. They've got ahead of them on Bank Street. With the sidewalk, the plan is to finish Bank Street curbs and then head to Ferris Street. We have a. Site meeting tomorrow on Ferris Street just to walk it and see. We're going to be taking, removing that sidewalk on the north side. And just putting in a, replacing just the curb and bringing all the homeowners sidewalk to the curb. And then on the south side, there's about a twelve inch. Green belt that we're going to eliminate and push the curb back to the sidewalk. So that'll widen that street. And then we'll hit rug and then go from there.
Any questions for Marty? Marty, when you say go from there, what's after rug?
We've got a short piece on Beverly Court. We've got a little piece on Burnell Terrace of sidewalk. We've got a. Section down on Russell. And then I think there are a couple of other smaller ones, but nothing to the extent. Those are all the major ones and we're trying to get them done. So we can get paving done and then have that section done up around.
Uh, so we can get paving done and then have that section done up around BFA. So when kids come to park, that'll, those will be done.
And this will wrap up the side and sidewalk and curb project?
It will. I'm not sure we'll be able to finish it all this year, um, because of the COVID, uh, time delay that we experienced. And the contractor is aware of that and agreed to hold his price and finish next year if we have to. Uh, the other issue that we have is with the curbs. Uh, we had some, um, surplus. And he was able to get started on that, but our contractor that produces those curbs had to shut down for COVID-19 as well. So, um, that's put us behind as well. So, uh, it's just waiting to see what they can produce and how far we can get, depending on the weather.
Any questions of Marty? Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on to the mayor's report, a couple of quick things. Um, had Green Up Day on Saturday, had about 80 people show up. Uh, thank you for, uh, councilors, uh, who helped hand out bags and, and check people in. Um, probably the biggest complaint we had was there was no trash. Um, and I think it's a big, uh, you push it back a month, it makes a difference, especially as nice as the spring was. A lot of people had gotten out and done a lot of cleanup prior to May 30th. So next year, I expect we'll be back on the first Saturday of May timeline. Uh, but we did have National Guard participate and CCV as well, uh, along with many families. So that was, it was good. Um, I'm not sure if many of you saw the piece that Kristen put together, which was the neighborhood investments. That was in the messenger. Um, received a number of comments on that. Uh, people were appreciative of it. Um, so, um, keep your eyes open. Uh, we can always do another version. Uh, the discussion, uh, Chip and Dom and I had is where do you, where's a cutoff on that? Um, you know, is it, I, I like to think it's taking a sort of a vacant, uh, dilapidated house and someone investing, turning it over as opposed to just a facelift. Um, but that's a conversation we can have. And the other thing that the question I probably get most of now is, uh, and I've shared with Marty is, um, a number of streets and neighborhoods, and this will go to budgeting, no doubt, but, um, a lot of people would like to see curbs, uh, in their, on certain streets, certain neighborhoods. So that's something we'll stick in the back of our mind and that's to get some consideration to, um. You know, I think it's, uh, now that the curbs are in, it's quite obvious where they're not. It makes it that much more noticeable. So, um, something to look at in the future. Uh, lastly, I would ask, uh, Mike to give us a quick update on the local option tax. You're muted, Mike.
Yeah, no, there we are. Uh, so H943, uh, passed GovOps, passed the House Ways and Means Committee, uh, with only a token, no vote from, uh, the chair who on principle doesn't like local option taxes, but allows them to go through anyway. Um, it was, uh, up for action last week, but got bumped for the FY '21, uh, first quarter budget. So, uh, we will be voting on it tomorrow for third reading and then Wednesday it will pass the House and be on to the Senate. And I anticipate a quick, uh, look from GovOps in the Senate and a speedy, uh, pass there. Uh, all of the players know, uh, we need it passed before the end of the month and signed by the governor. So, we're on schedule, cutting it a little closer than I would have liked, but that's legislating during COVID-19.
Good. Thank you, Mike. Uh, anyone have any questions of me? Hearing none, we'll move on to.
Hold on a sec there, Mr. Mayor. So you, you say there's no trash. So is that you volunteering to do Market Street next year?
No, those are, those are people in the park. Mike can attest to that.
Yeah, it, so, you know, there, there are definitely clusters with the Green Up Day and, uh, you know, if folks are trying to stay in the downtown, man, we have really done a good job of keeping that downtown clean, uh, while things have been shut down for COVID-19. But, you know, in those places where, you know, you, you kind of get down, um, you know, in the, in the places where the brook has kind of wooded areas and stuff and trash blows and litter blows into them and collects, uh, there were definitely some projects, but, um, there was a lot less litter in the neighborhoods and in the downtown than there usually is. That's for sure.
It's a good thing. Um, let's move on to number 11, counselor reports. We'll start in the upper right corner of my screen with, uh, Mr. Spooner.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it out of the way quick. We hope.
I, I got nothing.
Oh. He's ready for bed.
Move to adjourn.
Marty's already taken care of me this month.
Hey, we'll move on to Kate.
Um, I just want to say that I really appreciate the number of people who showed up to the meeting tonight to voice their opinions. Um, good questions, good thoughts. And I, I really, it's refreshing to, to get some different voices there. So I just want to say, I think that's a reflection on our community.
On the table in there for now.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, there's no way I'm going to put Marie last, so we're going to go to Marie.
Okay, the only, um, complaint that I have had is the fireworks and firecrackers at about nine o'clock. And if we go much longer with the meeting, you guys will be able to hear them. Um,
Not every night.
Just about every night, yeah. And, uh, last night there were five or six loud booms in succession and, um, they seem to be coming from the Colony Square area, Spruce Street and that area. Um, Beverage Mart, somebody said they were coming from around the Beverage Mart. Um, so, you know, I, I, I know if you call the police, I mean, unless the police are sitting right there, they're not going to catch them. So it, it's kind of a hard thing to patrol. But I think they possibly are aware of it. I think residents have complained to them. Um, so hopefully it'll come to a stop, but, um, it's disturbing a lot of kids' sleep, but it does bother the dogs. And, um, you know, it's just, it's, it seems to be a recurring problem every year for, for whatever reason. I, I guess they just can't read the calendar and know that it's not July 4th yet. But anyway, um, it, it, it seemed to start early this year.
Sorry, I would say I was in the office last night and they, uh, there were some, uh, like, uh, east of, uh, St. Mary's up on this end of town.
Oh, is that right? Yeah.
Three or four, right around, uh, 9:30 or 10:00.
Yeah, yeah. These are about nine o'clock here. So, yeah, they, they moved up.
You know, Marie, we encourage people to get outside and do activities. And now when they do them, we complain about it.
I know. We're never happy, are we, Jim?
We'll go to, we'll go to you now, James.
Okay, uh, I don't have a lot. Uh, Marty, you still on?
Yes.
Um, yes, sir.
Just, I was talking to a, a couple of my neighbors that care about this lady a lot. That there was a discussion, uh, years ago about maybe doing a curb cut and allowing, uh, uh, easier access for Martha Dalton to leave her home. She's been pretty much homebound. She can't really get out. The curb's so high and she doesn't have easy access to the street. And is that something we can still look into?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Yeah.
So, uh, pretty much all I had other than, um, uh, you know, agreeing with Marie, which is unusual that we'd agree, but you know, hey.
Okay, we'll go to Tim.
Um, one quick one and a comment. Uh, the lights at the, um, Newton Street, Main Street, uh, still don't operate properly. Um, I don't know if they're supposed to sense a car being there or not, but, uh, I sat there for, through the whole cycle, uh, with no cars, uh, around. And it's, it's, I, I do that often. And I don't know if they're supposed to work, uh, the same way with motion, uh, sensors, but they're not working. Um, that's my, that's the comment. Uh, the question I have, uh, has anybody in the city who owns a restaurant, uh, requested, um, uh, seating availability in a street or a parking area that has been denied?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Uh, just to build off of that, wasn't the discussion, uh, spots may have been offered to restaurants and they did not, they chose not to use them?
Oh, yeah, we, we put the word out big time, uh, when that was allowed and, uh, we got no requests for parking spaces or streets from restaurants. And Marty and I walked all over the city that Friday. And we, and we came up with a lot of solutions for folks, mostly on sidewalks. Um, no one wanted a parking spacer or to be in the street. So far, so far.
Yeah, we met with probably a half a dozen to eight different restaurants and, uh, made the offer as well as the Taylor Park offer.
Have there been any complaints from any of the storefronts, uh, that are not restaurants? Um, when there is a restaurant table in front of their store? An example would be, uh, Twigs, uh, going all the way down to almost the gallery.
Uh, I wasn't aware he was that far down, but no, I haven't received any complaints.
That might be a, a little bit of an exaggeration, but I'm just wondering if there's been any complaints. I, I, I'm certainly not complaining about it. I just didn't know if anyone complained about it.
He, last year, Tom went down, he purchased that building that, uh, Bayberry Cottage is in. And he put tables in front of that with, with, after speaking with, uh, the tenant there and Sharon agreed to allow to have tables there. So, but I haven't received any other comments or complaints this year.
I just noticed that the other night, it was such a great evening and it was, then, and Main Street was lined with a, a bunch of tables all the way up and down. And it looked nice. And I just thought about it and said, well, maybe it's later in the evening. So, you know, it's really not going to bother anybody. That's why there's no. I certainly didn't have a problem with it. That's all I have, Tim. Thanks.
To your, to your point, Tim, I, I noticed, um, uh, there was a table in the dance studio, uh, doorway. Uh, but it was after hours. So I don't know if Thomas had those conversations with Cheryl or not, but.
I noticed he, there was one in the UPS Alcove as well, but it was, I think, Saturday night where it was a little touch and go with rain. And I'm not sure if they just moved in there to get out of the weather or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
Can I just follow up a little bit on that? Uh, if I may, um, I noticed, um, um, and I, I hate to single out a certain business, but one, uh, restaurant in South Main Street that has tables, it looks to me like the tables are set up pretty close to where this, the pass where people will walk down the city sidewalk. And is that maintaining the proper social distance that we really need right now with this COVID-19? And should we be looking at that to make sure the tables are far enough away from the public? Um, um, egress and ingress, uh, to make sure that we're not violating that, that space?
Yeah, that's a good question, Jim. I think it, uh, comes down to enforcement and who enforces it. I know PD has reached out on several occasions for educational conversations with people. Uh, I've had the conversation with, um, a couple of restaurants on South, down on South Main that are right there together, that have a lot of, tend to have a lot of people outside waiting for their curbside pickup. And ask them just to, you know, monitor it. And, and I know they've had conversations as well with customers, but, um, that's a, that's a tough nut to crack, I think, between having PD monitor it and relying on the restaurant owners to enforce it.
I've noticed a couple of tables there that seem to be right along the walkway. If I was walking by the restaurant, I'm going to be right on top of these people that are sitting there eating or dying. And, and it seems to me there's got to be some ability to, I mean, I would walk out the street before I'd walk by it because I'm really concerned about the social distancing.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, Michael?
Thanks. Uh, wanted to say thank you to Marty for a quick response to, uh, an interesting conversation on Facebook about a sinkhole on Lincoln Avenue. Uh, people were talking about Hulk smashing it or Godzilla coming in. Um, so thanks, Marty, for coming right out there on the weekend and putting some cones up and getting on that.
No, thanks for, thanks for bringing it to our attention. So we could get on it quickly.
That was a lot, a lot of drama on Facebook. Um, so I, I wanted to say a few things. I, I've been thinking a lot, um, since the protests um, last week and, um, wanted to, to just share some thoughts and ideas with you. So, you know, we heard a request tonight, um, for us to make a statement, um, about what's happening, happening nationally and what we're doing. Um, you know, I know we've said a lot of things, but I think there's a new moment and it might be worth us writing something. And I'm wondering if, you know, me, the mayor, a couple of us could get together, draft something that we could all, uh, you know, put in the messenger, put on our Facebook page.
A resolution?
So, yeah, it's a resolution, but I think we need to do it faster and we weren't prepared with a resolution for today. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm wondering what folks think about that. Um, and, you know, I think we, we've got a lot to be proud of because we've been having these conversations about use of force and, and the police. And we're, we're moving through this process with MRI. Um, but we also, you know, we're hearing from some of our neighbors and we heard from a few of them who came today, uh, with, with some things. And I, I sent you all a letter from Bori Yang, who's the Human Rights Commission, uh, my Human Rights Commission Executive Director. And, you know, one of the first things that they recommend is that there be a community oversight panel for police. Um, and, you know, I'm wondering if we can look at some of the models that other communities have that have really worked, um, and take, you know, a, a data-driven and experience-driven approach to looking at having some more community involvement in overseeing or setting some principles and guidelines for where we want to see our police department go, what we want the vision of the new chief to be, um, and how we do that participation. Um, uh, you know, I'd like to see us be a little more transparent and publish some of our policing policies and maybe make, uh, and think about a new statement of what our values are, um, and what principles we want to see with our community policing. And, you know, there, there are some great resources right now. Um, the eight can't wait policies, you know, I think we've already adopted some of them, like we don't allow the kinds of chokeholds that, uh, are, are used. And people are talking about outlawing in other places. We're ahead of the curve there, but, um, Campaign Zero is another, uh, great resource that has a, a bunch of um, police policies that are designed, that are data-driven, that are proven to reduce, uh, use of force and especially, um, the racial biases that I think, uh, that we're seeing. And when that conversation came up today, you know, I'm really thinking a lot about, do we have the data to say whether or not we have a good and, um, responsive, fair and, um, impartial policing policy? And, um, you know, I think we, we want to be able to confidently say that, um, you know? And so those are some of the thoughts that I've had. And the, the police department is about a third of our budget. You know, it's the single biggest line item and it's very important. And we've done a lot to improve policing in St. Albans, but, um, I think we, I think we could go from a place of having had these bad headlines to being leaders and doing policing and really feeling good about our police department with the opportunity we have with the new chief of police. And I, I think if we take a broader look and get some more community input, we'll end up in a better place and have everybody feel safe and protected. So, um, I think the place we need to start is making a real statement of solidarity with people who want to say that Black Lives Matter, that the murder of George Floyd really woke a lot of us up and made us look even further into our own police departments. Um, I think that'd be a great place to start.
Thank you, Mike. Um, you suggested pulling some people together. Is there, um, individuals who would like to sit down and have that discussion?
I'd like to be a part of that.
Was that a yes, Kate?
Sorry, yeah, that's a yes.
Anyone else? So, uh, I'll join you, Mike and Kate. Uh, Mike, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it on you though to organize it.
Sounds great.
So.
Um, we're all going to be able to review that after, correct?
Yes.
I would, yeah, because I would love to, you know, if there's input to give, I'd love to give input, but I just don't have the time to. I would, yeah, because I would love to, you know, if there's input to give, I'd love to give input, but I just don't have the time to draw something up right now.
Yeah, I'll write up some bullets and schedule a time. And then maybe the three of us can, can come up with a draft, get feedback, and then get something out in the next couple of days, if that works.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind giving some info. I just don't feel like I could be on a subcommittee right now, basically.
You're too busy in retirement, Jim.
Yeah, there may be some surgery times opened up. I may be getting my surgery and I don't know when that'll be, so I don't want to commit until I know.
Understandable. Thank you. All right, let's move on to any other business? Anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on to number 13. Consider approval of regular minute, regular meeting minutes from 5:11.
That's 5:11:20.
Motion from Tim, seconded by James. Any corrections, amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor, thumbs up. Passes unanimously. Moving on to number 14, consider approval of warrants.
Motion to approve warrants, 5:15:20.
Second by James, motion by Tim. Any questions? Hearing none, all those thumbs up. Motion passes.
Motion to approve minutes 5:31:20. Warrants 5:30.
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion to approve warrant from 5:31:20. Any questions? Hearing none, all those approve the warrants for 5:31, thumbs up. Unanimous, that passes. Any last comments before we adjourn?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, James. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.